Public comment. Okay, yes sir.
Thank you.
My name is John Assalone, 3 Sabina Court. I'll probably be very brief this evening. And I will skip some remarks I was going to make, which should be regarding, but I think with your conduct and the respect for the people that we're here. I'm not quite sure I want to go there yet.
Mr. Assalone, let me explain that I don't understand a word you just said, but...
I just think your conduct...
Whatever my conduct was, you can either say it or not.
I don't explain it. I think your conduct at times, if people don't want to speak of things as you've heard before, at times have put down demeaning. That's my opinion.
Thank you. I was going to qualify that.
I think you're a great family guy. You're a pretty smart guy, but I also think at times, my personal opinion, that you feel like you don't want to be bothered with facts.
Well, that's incorrect, but that's your personal opinion.
Now, I'll just give you an example. When I was speaking last week about tests that were made in... This might be his claim.
I asked if DM had been out there.
DM has been out there 140 times.
I heard your answer.
Well, I didn't say that last week. But they weren't conducting tests. They were out there because people couldn't breathe. That's why they were out there.
I asked the question.
Okay. With regards to non-conforming use, I'm not maturing, but it's pretty clear that a zoning, a planning board cannot grant an additional non-conforming use. It's just not possible. And in 2009, this is when the problems really started regarding Otis complaints. And it just happened in 2000... By the way, Sandra Court and Lisa's Way, if you want to check our leases, part of your town records, the majority of those homes were there before Mr. Miozy, undoubtedly so, here waiting. And then a lot of the complaints started coming forward in 2009. 2009, the planning board granted Mr. Miozy an additional, an additional four, four hot mix asphalt storage silos. No permit were ever taken off on those. No zoning was ever granted on this. It is clearly an expansion of a non-conforming use. It's just not allowed. And what happens with, and why is this in there? What hap- how do people get around non-conforming uses? You can look up the legal terms that attorneys have, I'm sure, but example, "In general, substantial alterations in the nature of a business, new equipment that is not a replacement but a subterfuge to expand the use of property or a structure amount to illegal expansion or extension." These types of actions will result in the loss of non, in the use of non-conforming status. This is all on the record. And I think that may do it unless I would like the opportunity to re-balance anything that's under account. My favor is lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, yes sir. The gentleman in the white... Sure.
Good evening. I have the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm Donald Skuesel, 28 San Francisco Circle in Coventry. This will be brief. Councilor Goram said last Monday night that the town can't deny a bid because they wish to. I spent 30 years involving bid processes, deals a lot bigger than $2.5 million, and I assure you that I never saw a responsibility to pay a bid, or RFP or RFQ. They didn't have such language. So, particularly, they can deny a bid for cause. They have a reason. Well, last week, Mr. Miozy talked about the fact that he was interested in moving the business from Coventry somewhere else, to these other communities apparently. And other people spoke to the fact that he pays taxes, and I think he employs something like 46 people. I may be wrong on that, but the number 46 there is my memory. Well, in 2015, in Southern New England, if there's a business employing 46 people that wants to relocate, there should be a line all the way down Reservoir Road from communities, towns, cities, all over Southern New England, trying to woo this business to their community. If 46 employees is such a wonderful thing, you'd think that every town in Southern New England would be after that. But for some reason, I don't notice that traffic. And I think the reason I don't notice that traffic is for the very reason that this bid should be denied for cause and by the way with prejudice. Mr. Miozy is a lousy neighbor. It's loud, which is not, which is not a terrible deal. I went out in my yard this morning at 7:15. I don't think it smells like this in Tiverton. Okay? Where one of the principals from that company is from. I don't think it smells like that in North Kingston, where some other people who spoke in this behalf last week were from. But it smells like that in Westwood and in Western Wood Estates. So, watch through this Mr. Bid. It's a lousy neighbor. He's poisoning us. And he considers Coventry laws and ordinances nothing more than suggestions. Law and ordinances passed by this buyer, this person wrongly ignores because they don't serve his personal purposes. I consider that and this so as a resident of Coventry. Thank you for your time.
Public comments, next. Yes, sir. The record name?
Thomas Miozy, 66 Steamboat Ave., North Kingston, owner of 75 Airport Road, Coventry, Rhode Island. Good evening. To all members of the town council and the good citizens of the United States, I stand before you not only as a businessman, but as a citizen of the United States. T. Miozy Inc. has worked diligently to be the best neighbor we can to residential or housing. I don't heckle you when you talk. Please allow me to curse. We have not been, we have not been convicted of any crime against our neighbors. On the matter of being a bad neighbor, in a recent phone call to Mr. Assalone himself as of six weeks ago, when I suggested moving the plant and that I would need financial assistance, I think we should team up and do it, his exact words to me, "I don't think you're the problem. I think it's the other guys." Okay. Well, listen, I'm willing to move. I'm actually one of the only people in that part that realizes it's a difficult situation. Everybody else just wants to stay there and butt heads. I would love to move the place. Like I had explained before, we have a heavy industrial zone that is not covered by a light industrial zone, that is not covered by a commercial zone. That being said, I feel the easiest thing to do is to move the five operations out of there versus the 450 homes. We need help for that. Okay. Now, getting back to it. If the town council should vote against the award of the $2.5 million contract, I along with my 45 employees and all the other local Coventry businesses we do business with will feel the impact for what will be considered a $2.5 million fine. All of which being levied without a hint of due process. Imagine that, an alleged murderer, an alleged rapist, an alleged drug dealer, and an alleged pedophile are entitled to this. But the workers at T. Miozy Inc. are not. All this, I don't even want to get into that. Okay, I'm not going to sling anything. And let's just, I want to touch on the $7 increase. It's not just a $7 increase. By the end of the bond money, my math tells me it would be 16 to 20 streets that remain unpaid. You have the DPW director and the engineer's positive recommend, recommendation for the award of the contract, T. Miozy Inc. We have proven time after time throughout the state to have completed the contract after contract. I've been actively looking for a solution to the neighborhood approach and on the industrial park. A $2.5 million fine will only slow that progress. And I can assure you, it takes money to move it. Tonight, you may hear some people in the audience not saying very nice things about it. It's their right. It's America. It's a free country. But let's remember everybody's constitutional right. We are entitled to at least due process. Thank you and done. I just want to say one thing. I have a what I feel the best paving crew in the state right now. These guys are incredible. They are blue collar, hardworking men and women. And I just want to thank them tonight and everybody else for participating in this process.
Could I just ask a question? I, I heard the $7 figure last meeting and again and again. Are you referring to what it would cost a additional taxpayer?
No, that was Mr. Assalone.
I know, I'm asking you though.
May I?
The $7 gave up, exactly $144,000?
$144,000.
That's what I'm asking.
Excuse me. Yep.
Is that the $144,000 the next highest bidder would divide by the number of residents that you come up with at the $7?
That was Mr. Assalone's assumption, I would figure. Okay.
And the other thing is, I just wanted to acknowledge that I did get a letter from Representative Garna Lul's State House office in that, I guess you did reach out to him and asking for any assistance, guidance, directions to entities that may offer assistance in the... Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Wednesday, August 26th. That is from this office and this place is their policy analyst and communications director and housework president. Okay, so I just confirmed that I got a notice on that.
Does anybody else?
I don't have any other personal questions right now.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Public, yes. Just some clarification. A week ago before the meeting last week, Mr. Assalone had called me up to discuss, his question to me was, what, what additional amount per average household would the additional $144,000 meant? It was after the meeting last week. At some point, Mr. Assalone realized that this was coming from bond proceeds and it would not be, and which we're already, which is already figured into the FY '16 budget. So, the question was more of a moot point because it's from bond proceeds. The $144,000 additional is moving out of the month out would mean that less fees would get paid. So, quantify that argument, but I just wanted to give a point of clarification.
Okay, but again, with the bond issue referendum, taxpayers still pay for the work that is done.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, it's not because, they don't pay the, they don't not pay the extra because it's a bond?
No, but there'll be, there'll be no additional money because of the $144,000, well, dollar difference on the taxpayers because the bond is, the debt service is already figured into the FY '16 budget. So, just wanted to clarify.
Is there any amount for the cost of the job?
Well, we're going to use the entire bond proceeds. It's just a matter of how we use it.
Right. So, if we use it for that purpose, then we couldn't use it for another purpose?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
Understood.
That was my thought exactly. It is still taxpayer money.
Of course it is.
Whether it's...
I think it was a statement in the Times or something, but of course it is.
But they even assume that it's, it's okay because it come out of the pocket. It's taxpayer money.
We're on the same page. Okay, public comment. Wait a minute first. And then, great reading on the front text.
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. Attorney John Bagley, I represent T. Miozy Inc. I would present as an exhibit several documents to the council. One of them is an 18-page decision, sorry, 15-page, 14-page decision of Superior Court Judge Prakashini when the town of Coventry brought Mr. Miozy a nuisance action. And this is the actual testimony of, sorry, transcript of the judge's decision which includes in Mr. Assalone's testimony, the testimony of the president of the association, and the findings of the court that Mr. Miozy is a good, qualified citizen in black and white. In addition, it's time that the rest of the council saw certain correspondence between the town solicitor and myself and the heads of a lot of the council members. There's been more than one meeting on this topic since January, and I'd like to provide the council with copies of these documents. In addition, we do have a pending application in another municipality for an asphalt plant. And once again, we're, we're in litigation on that matter. And interestingly, I raised an issue that was overruled by the court because the attorney for Westwood is representing the abutter who's stopping us from moving to that community. And I thought there was a distinct conflict of interest between the Coventry attorney saying, "Get out of Coventry", and the same attorney saying, "Don't come to this town." But the Superior Court won the argument of that attorney that he had no conflict. So, I used to say, we are now almost at the point, recent filed, there's a few motions left to clean up. But we will know shortly whether or not we will have a home in another community. Thank you. Another community.
Mr. President?
An additional one.
Could you tell us some where that case is pending and, you know, if they captured? I mean, which, which town is it that you're in litigation with?
I think that's usually found, but we're in Washington.
I mean...
We're in Washington County.
You don't want to tell us the town? I mean, you, you just disparaged an attorney, a member of the bar about his refusal to
No, I said, I said the court.
Acknowledge a conflict of interest.
The court, the court found there was no conflict of interest.
All right, so, so what, what town is it?
It's the town of Edgerton.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we require information, okay? On the record?
On the record, it is.
We have new counsel representing...
You got to come on the mic.
Yeah, come on the mic. Mention something about an attorney. We have nothing to do with opposing exit or relocation whatsoever. We have an attorney, a new attorney representing Westwood. Basically, very frankly, going after Mr. Miozy's operation because he's told me a conflict of zoning, et cetera, nuisance, et cetera. So, our attorney that was there is not stopping anything on our part, nor have we ever asked him to oppose. That was his own situation. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Gary Cody. I live at 29 15th Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, and I am an employee of T. Miozy Inc. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to address the council tonight and the rest of the people that are gathered in this hall. As a taxpayer here in the town of Coventry, I would absolutely like to see that they go to the lowest qualified bidder. Now, as far as what Mr. Miozy said, it, it kind of makes a lot of sense to me in my head. By denying him the contract as the lowest qualified bidder, the town council is essentially assessing a $2.5 million fine against T. Miozy Inc. for what is at this point accusations, innuendo, and rumor and other people's opinions. I think everyone is, is capable of getting due process in this country. More importantly than that, I have more faith in the town of Coventry and to believe that a company or an individual would be found guilty and fined for anything that they were not duly found guilty of committing. All I'm asking is as a taxpayer to give the contract to the lowest qualified bidder in this case. And if the town feels that it is necessary to move forward with the case against T. Miozy Inc., I'm sure that the town and its solicitor have the ability to do that if that's what the town chooses to do. But let's not put this off any longer. Let's get the paving done before the winter sets in. Let's give it to a company that's here. Let's give it to a company that employs local people. Let's give it to a company that's here supporting our tax base. And then the town of Coventry can move forward with anything it wants to against T. Miozy Incorporated moving forward. I'm sure the town is completely capable of that. Thank you for your time. You have a great night.
Gentlemen in the white shirt.
Ken Jackson, 27 99, Hocknail Road. Of the 46 people, how many of them are Coventry residents? Therefore, they're helping off the tax. That's the only thing I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman on the the road. Yes. No, you think you had a...
No, I'm just saying I'm a Coventry resident.
Okay. Any other public comments? Or what? On the way in the back, please. Yes, sir.
Name of the town in Blundsturka, 38 acres of plain road, Coventry. I'd just like to inform you on how the construction industry works in Rhode Island. I work for Deember Construction, I'm a project manager and a project engineer. Deember Construction was the number two bidder. If I end up with this project, I'm going to hire Tom Miozy to do the paving. I'm also going to buy asphalt from Tom Miozy. And I'm going to hire Tom Miozy's trucks to haul asphalt. It's economics. It makes sense. Please don't make it personal. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good-looking gentleman with his specs. Anywhere at best, please?
Ari Larson, 3 Peachtree Lane, Coventry. Good evening. On July 23rd, I contacted the town hall because I had some concerns with the sidewalk replacement project that's ongoing in the rural state's neighborhood. One of the big concerns was compliance to the Americans with Disabilities Act and some of the prep work that was done. I called Mr. Hoover's office and was referred to the town engineer.
And I tell you.
Left a message asking him to call back. That was on the 23rd. On the 27th, I had not got a reply, so I sent an email to Mr. Hoover, Mr. Joyl, and my colleague, Andy Duxman, addressing the concerns a little further and putting some additional photographs in there. Tammy responded right away and she would get in touch with the Director of Public Works, Mr. McGee. Two days later, she gave me a response on what was going on, the inspection process, and what was transpiring during demolition of all the sidewalks.
I gave you copies.
And then I copied you what I'd said. I was a little frustrated that nobody called me back. Finally, on the 30th of July, seven days later, Mr. McGee sent me back a return email or a phone call that said, "Daily, myself and a town engineer were making independent inspections throughout the day. The town was providing inspections and authorizations prior to the finished product being installed. And as they progressed, the asphalt pavement of the sidewalk inspected. Would be on-site to test the temperatures, depths, and quality." Well, the project is now finished. I had the opportunity to walk around, and here's what I found. On the corner of Jack Pine and Peachtree, on the left-hand side of the road, a storm drain was installed at a 45-degree angle with a curb a budding halfway through. So, I don't know about new people, one night at school, watered in and run uphill. That accessibility ramp on the right side of the road is 103 inches wide. Directly across the street, 72 inches wide. So, you can see there's a lack of consistency. Also on the left side, there's a trip hazard because as with the other ramp, they put an angle on the curving coming down. On that one, they left the concrete curb perpendicular. On the corner of Jack Pine, the right-hand accessibility ramp is 52 inches, 57 inches wide and faces Jack Pine. The left one is 74 inches and faces Red Maple. All of the maple, but all the ramps are across from each other, so they can see this from here. Again, it's struggling to see the width. When you get to Jack Pine and Apple Blossom, the ramp on one side is only 47 inches wide. Directly across the street, 74 inches wide. In front of six apple blossoms, they put a curving 10 inches across, midway to home. For a big apple blossom, they cut across the storm drain. So, we found it to be able to curving. Left the sidewalk to 32 inches in width and 60 inches in width. So, obviously, if you have it, if you were walking visually impaired, you could walk right off into the storm drain. On the left side of Apple Blossom and Puckleberry, the ramps are 107 inches wide. In front of number 10, Apple Blossom on the corner, the sidewalk goes from 52 inches to 66 inches. On Apple Blossom and Blueberry, the storm drain is collapsing. So, when they put the new curving in, they have to build it up and shim it, so it would be level. On Puckleberry, on the side of that apple blossom, there's 214 inches of curving that is missing. It was never installed, never replaced by this project. On the part of Puckleberry and Peachtree, there's 214 inches of curving that is missing. On the Puckleberry and Peachtree intersection, the left accessibility ramp is 100 inches wide and the grass seating was never repeated. And on the other side of the street, on the right side, it's 120 inches wide. So, my question is, if the town was out supervising and qualified this work, how did all these decisions even go? Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Short of a note right now. I shall deliver 26 C on the circle. And as long as I was doing my morning sit-down, the mailroom that I usually go and I got a police officer pinged, "May I make a suspicious presence?" And I know most of us, or states, knows who I am, so I'm not here to make that vulnerable. But, um, again, this, I'm not here to put down Mr. Miozy. I'm not here. I'm just saying, he goes against all the rules, all of the ordinance. He doesn't follow anything. I'm there on a daily basis because he starts when he's not supposed to be starting. His trucks are going down the street when they're not supposed to be. And now, again, he said he's moving. He's been telling us that for four years. And now, if this, I don't trust him. And, um, I, he's not someone I can trust. Thank you.
I would like to say that I did get a phone message on my cellphone and I got the 408, but you were cut off on the other four numbers. I could not discern.
I was inviting you to come to my office.
I know that, but I couldn't, didn't know the other four numbers. I haven't read the address.
I'm actually invited everyone to come to my office.
I would have called you at least back, but I didn't get the last one.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm in the quad.
I would probably have, but I was down in Charles Oak Road, Alabama. On vacation, I guess. But, thank you. I just wanted you to know that. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Uh, yes, sir, the fruit grave.
Paulson, 14 Ridge Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. I just want to say that Mr. Skirka came up here a little while ago and mentioned, "Don't make this a personal thing." I don't believe this is personal. I believe this is a health issue, an environmental issue. People are suffering and people have been eating yas and smell stuff day in and day out. They're taking their fresh breath in the morning and getting like diesel smell in their lungs. So, it's not a personal issue. It's a health issue, environmental issue. And also, I'm sure Mr. Skirka, if there was another contractor who wanted to beg, he'd go after him also. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Tom Miozy, 13 20 Main Street. I believe we all agree you can't expand a non-conforming use. One question, how much, how many tons of asphalt is 2.5 million? And how does that compare with the quantity back in 2004 when Mr. Miozy started extending the non-conform use, but I'll give him that because planning apparently looked the other way. But this contract alone will expand his non-conforming use. I don't believe the town of Coventry should be contributing to the expansion of a non-conforming use. Thank you.
Anyone else for comment? Anyone else for comment? Yes, sir, wait in the back.
Good evening. Council President, Mr. Shibley, other Council members.
Give your name, name and address. Give your name, Tom. Name and address.
Town four C, thirty-second Lane. Good evening to you all. I want to tell you about the ongoing, um, expansion of the campground. The ongoing expansion of the Waters Edge Campground has been going on for three years. We, the neighbors, have tried to address this for three years, and tried to get a resolution for this. We stated that the zoning officer doesn't do his job, we bought for somebody to check into it. The new owner of the campground clearly shows that he's expanding the campground. And I, as a taxpayer, can't understand why I have to spend thousands of dollars hiring a lawyer to respect the property values. I can't understand why a business license can't be suspended until that is resolved. This issue should have been, this issue should have been resolved long, long time I believe that all parties have equal rights. I believe I've been ignored by my town administration department. I don't believe that our outgoing town manager did anything to investigate and try to resolve this issue. Mr. Hoover's allegiance isn't for the taxpayers, it's just for a selective view. I won't issue. All I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any comment in place? Yes, sir.
My name's Anthony Prophoney, I live at two-ninety-nine Yambro in Coventry.
Give your name again.
Anthony Prophoney. I'm the paving foreman at T. Miozy, and I just need to read these two letters. One is from the town of South Kingston, and it says, "Dear Mr. Miozy, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank T. Miozy, Inc. for the recent roadway overlay and reconstruction work on approximately eight lane miles in the town of South Kingston. This office was very pleased with the expeditious of the work, cooperation with the local residents in the finished product. Furthermore, work crews, supervisors, staffs were professional and easy to work with. Sincerely, Joshua Rosin, the town engineer." The second-